Good morning. And welcome to the 2019 School Board Candidate Forum, sponsored by Edina Public Schools Parent Leadership Council. The PLC is comprised of parent leaders from each school and leaders from our district partners. My name is Corinne Treewyler. I am the co-chair of the Edina PLC and moderator for today's forum. Thank you all for attending. Before we get started, I ask that you each check your cell phones, please. Either turn them off or put them on silent. Thank you. This forum is an opportunity to get to know the candidates running for school board, and there should be absolutely no cheering, booing, or interruptions of any kind from any audience member during the proceedings. This forum is being recorded, so please hold your applause until the very end. The forum will be available for viewing on the district's website later this week. All candidates who have filed for the Office of School Board and who will be on the November 5th ballot were invited to this forum. I want to thank each of the candidates for participating in today's important event. Additionally, I want to thank their candidates for their participation in submitting video clips to a format called Flipgrid. Flipgrid video technology is used in Edina Public Schools classrooms as a tool to engage students in learning and as a creative way for the students to show what they know. The Edina PLC partnered with the district's Department of Media and Technology Services to provide the public with an additional opportunity to get to know the 2019 candidates for school board. The candidates each prepared five questions and were given 90 seconds to respond to each of those questions. Of note, those five questions are not going to be asked in today's forum, so please check out their video clips online on the district's website. Here are the rules and the format for today's forum. Speaking order was assigned randomly before the forum and will rotate with each question. I will call on the candidates to answer the general questions by first and last name. Each candidate will be given 65 seconds to make an opening statement. All candidates will answer general topic questions, and I will indicate in the question whether 60 seconds or 90 seconds is the time cap for that question. All candidates will answer lightning round questions that will consist of answering with either a yes or no. All candidates will raise their provided paddle at the same time to the yes or no lightning round question. In addition to your paddle answer, you will each be given the chance to say a verbal yes or no by going down the line in alphabetical order. I will indicate your turn with a nod of my head. Candidates will each have 90 seconds to make a closing statement. Members of the PLC will be tracking your time of your answers and will indicate to the candidates when they have 30 seconds remaining, 15 seconds remaining, and when you must stop. The PLC solicited questions from our parent leaders and attempts in good faith to cover as many of the topics submitted as possible within the timeframe allotted. Let's begin today's forum. We will be beginning with Lenny Wallen-Friedman. We're going to start with an opening statement from each candidate. Each of you will be given 65 seconds to respond.
All right. Thank you for hosting this forum. I want to give you a little bit of background about myself, so as I answer questions during the day, you understand where I come from. I was raised by a special education teacher who stressed opportunity through education and giving back to the community so that others could also have opportunity. Those values have driven my actions and have led me to run for and serve on the school board. My wife and I moved to Edina 26 years ago because we believed Edina would provide the kind of educational opportunity that our kids needed, and we were right. We have three children, two of whom went to Edina, graduated, and went off well-prepared for college. Our third is a junior in high school, and she's also well-prepared. I'm an attorney with a focus on business litigation. I've spent over 30 years listening to questions, formulating advice, and helping guide my clients. I've been on the school board for the past eight years. The last four years, I've served as school board chair at the request of my peers. In addition to my work with the school board, I volunteered over the past 20 years in many capacities so that the kids in our district could have opportunity.
Thank you. Your time is up.
Janie Shaw. Hello. My name is Janie Shaw, and I live here in Edina with my husband and our two sons who attend Edina schools. Here are some things that I want you to know about me, so you have a context for my answers today. I have a business background, working in the airline industry for many years. My work included the implementation of a revenue management tool, which basically took mass amounts of data and turned it into actionable information. I led a team that identified, valued, and developed metrics for hundreds of customer touchpoints in the merging of two major airlines. I managed domestic brand recovery advertising after September 11th. For the last 14 years, I've been really involved in our schools. From classroom volunteering, PTO presidency and leadership at three different schools, a member of this PLC for seven years, I have sat on numerous district committees and worked for a number of years at Highlands, supporting teachers with math and science curriculum. I am truly boots on the ground in our schools. I'm proud to say that my work here has revolved around building relationships and helping to find creative solutions when things like funding become a barrier to good education for all students.
Sarah Patzloff. I'm Sarah, and my husband Paul and I, who is an Edina graduate, have two kids at the high school. We have a freshman and a senior this year. And we moved to Edina 19 years ago because we knew we wanted to raise our kids in a world-class school district. And I fell in love with Edina and all that it has to offer, and I really value its dedication to education. I'm running for reelection because I bring an experienced, independent voice to drive for excellence in education for all. I've heard from our parents and our community. I've listened to their concerns, and I've shared in their pride of our schools. You care about the education of your children, and you need a strong voice that will represent you when decisions are being made on behalf of your kids. I work hard to ask the questions that need to be answered, and I push for data that will help ensure that we make thoughtful decisions. The school board has a lot of work ahead of it this next year, and I believe that my experience and understanding of the issues over time will be an asset to the board.
Lou Nanny. Hi, everyone. I'm Lou Nanny, a proud Edina High School graduate from the class of 2013. I went on to attend RPI where I played hockey and studied biomedical engineering, all while graduating in three years. I then turned the page and got married to the love of my life, only to settle down in the city that I fell in love with growing up in, Edina. However, after speaking with neighbors and students alike in the school system, I couldn't stop saying to myself, "What happened to the Edina that I once knew and loved?" Yes, we had an amazing year with our band, robotics program, as well as winning more state tournaments than any other year. However, watching as Edina went from first to 10th as per U.S. News, and, which is a lagging indicator, just like that, was truly disheartening. I want to implement the ABCs of Edina, which I've laid out as academic achievement for all, base all of our decisions off of data, as well as have board transparency, and create multiple paths for all students' success. I want to give back to Edina what Edina gave to me.
Julie Green. I'm Julie Green, and I'm thrilled to be here at home base. I have four kids in three schools, from senior down to fourth grade. I worked downstairs recently in marketing, worked for community education, and I've attended dozens of board meetings and sessions over the last decade. I want to be on the Edina School Board. Each one of our 8,500 students is important. What can you expect from me? Fairness: I will do what's right versus what's easy. A strong partnership. A measured approach: I am thorough and thoughtful in my decision-making. And accountability: I hold myself to high standards, as I will staff, students, and parents. We are a public school system and an outstanding one. We have a springboard of opportunities here, and it starts with empowering our teachers so they can make the biggest impact possible in our classrooms for all of our students. What does that mean? A voice at the table, useful student data, and making sure that teachers have collaboration time with each other. We have important work to do, and we can do better.
Linda Fruity. Sorry, I have a cold. I hope you can understand me. I spent my childhood in both urban, inner-city schools and rural schools. I come from a family of very limited means. School was always my sanctuary, and I was inspired by teachers who pushed me to dream big. I was the first person in my family to attend college, and I graduated with high honors. My husband, who was a 1977 grad, and I moved back here 30 years ago to take advantage of our excellent schools. Edina Public Schools were strong partners with us on our sons' educational journeys. We made sure they brushed their teeth and did their homework, and we trusted their teachers, coaches, and community mentors to reinforce our message of striving for excellence inside and outside the classroom. As a teacher in Edina, I was privileged to collaborate with extraordinary colleagues, many of whom have become lifelong friends. I understand and have worked with students from all backgrounds and all educational levels, and believe that our number-one priority must be academic rigor and growth for every student.
Thank you. Your time is up.
Thank you. The following is a general question for each candidate. You will each have 60 seconds to respond. This question is going to start with Julie Green. Define governance and what it means to you as it relates to the school board. Specifically, where does your role end and district leadership begin, related to defining courses, curriculum, and evaluation?
Yeah, could you read that one more time?
Define governance. Define governance and what it means to you as it relates to the school board. Specifically, where does your role end and district leadership begin, related to defining
That's a great question. The role of the school board is very clear. It is governance. And what that means to be an effective board is that we have to look at governance in how it's defined in our policy. One, setting a strategic direction for the district. The big picture: where are we going? Where are we headed? It is not our job as a governance board to dip our hand in and say, "This is the tactic I think that we should do. That's why we have district leads. That's why we hire a superintendent." That would be our job as a governance board. And number two, approving the budget. Looking at all the different funds and all the needs and using resources within the district leads and the information we get to make those decisions. And then, I think that to be effective, we have to make sure that governance is at the top of our priority list. That's... Thanks.
Sarah Patzloff.
Well, interestingly enough, governance is actually a theory and is defined by a lot of different people and how that role is played out, whether you're a nonprofit, a school board, or governance at a private company. But governance, to me, is oversight. And oversight doesn't, in my opinion, always have a start and an end. I don't think it's that clearly defined. There are going to be times when governance is easy and oversight is simply, you know, going through our packets, making sure that we show up and we understand, and we do the work and we approve or disapprove things that come to the board. But there are other times when that may have to go a bit further, where we may ask to dig deeper, we may want more information. But that information is needed so that we can make the best decisions. And if we're in a situation where we're feeling uncomfortable with a decision that we have to make because we're lacking information, that definitely is our job to get involved. We need to be there. We need to work and collaborate with our leaders and our education.
Lenny Wallen-Friedman.
So, the role of governance is to set the direction for the district. It's to provide oversight and to resolve budget questions. So, the board does not get involved in day-to-day activities of the district. We are oversight. We do not draft curriculum. While we have the ultimate authority on curriculum, I would look at curriculum this way, which is, when curriculum comes to me, my two primary questions that I would ask in a governance role is, does the proposed curriculum align with state standards, and is it age-appropriate? Those are your first two key questions. We should not be drafting curriculum. We should not be picking books. We should be setting metrics with the guidance of our administrators and our teachers. So, the lead on these things, where does it start? It starts with administration. It starts with teachers. They come to the board. We ask questions to validate what they are doing, and we go from there. Thank you.
Janie Shaw. So, the board has a governance role because it needs to effectively and efficiently and equitably guide our district through policy. The board's role is to develop that vision. It's to develop metrics against that vision that they hold the administration accountable It is also to ensure that our resources are aligned with those goals. The board alone does not have the ability to set any path towards those goals in a silo. Policy related to curriculum and the delivery of that curriculum, in my opinion, needs to allow for relative comparison when you're deciding what priorities that you're going to allocate funds towards. And governance sounds very lofty, but requires a lot of time in the trenches so that the decisions that the board is making, they have the information they need.
Thank you. Your time is up.
Lou Nanny. Yeah, I mean, I think Sarah hit the nail on the head with governance being oversight. Our main role as a school board is to evaluate and employ the superintendent, which, you know, the administration implements policy and supervises school operations. And our roles may look siloed, but we have to work across lines to ensure that the students are first and they're not being short-changed. So, yes, the administration implements the policy, yet we hire and fire the superintendent, and I feel like our role in governance is not defined, and there is no start or stop
Linda Fruity.
Well, an individual member of the board has no actual individual authority. Of course, each board member is only one-seventh of the board. The board, of course, is responsible for establishing policy, and the administration, led by the superintendent, implements the policy and supervises the actual operations. Of course, as everyone said, the board hires and fires a superintendent and establishes levy and such. Regarding curriculum, the board interprets the needs of the community regarding educational programming and works with, should be working with, the administration to define the district's educational goals, and then it authorizes the development and revision of curriculum and student services. I think metrics need to be attached at all levels. So, in other words, the board approves things and then needs to be checking in regularly to make sure that what was intended is actually what's happening with the students.
Thank you. We now move to the first lightning round. Again, the answer is either a yes or no by raising your paddle, and then a verbal response by moving down the row in alphabetical order. I'll indicate with a nod of my head. Do you think politics should influence individual board members and school board policy?
No.
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 Have you accepted support in any form from a political party to benefit your campaign?
No.
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 Have you or will you participate in any partisan-based forums?
Yes.
No.
Any and all.
Yes.
Yes.
No. Have you received any money for your campaign from Education Minnesota, the teachers' union?
No.
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 Have you ever had any communication with or shared information with Katherine Kirsten, an author in Center of the American Experiment? Excuse me, please. I'll restart the question. Have you ever had any communication with or shared information with Katherine Kirsten, an author in Center of the American Experiment, related to Edina Public Schools?
No.
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 We now move back to the general questions. You will have 60 seconds to respond. On this question, we're going to begin with Janie Shaw. What has Edina Public Schools done well in the past 18 months? Please be specific and share at least two things. Janie Shaw.
I got a fun one to start with. Let's see. I can think of many things, but a big one that comes to mind is the district's work towards early literacy and what that's looked like at some of our elementary schools. It's just a beginning, and it's a good start, and there's more work to do. But at Highlands Elementary, there's been a restructuring of our elementary school to give more opportunity and more time for our early readers, our emerging readers, to get strong foundations, and I know that is spreading across all of the schools. At the middle school, they've got an extremely robust student leadership program that continues to grow. There's been a lot of work at our middle schools about opening up opportunities for flexibility in schedules and times to have systematic interventions for our students. At the high school, there's been an increased effort towards mental health in the new co-located mental health services that our students are receiving. Oh, God, I could keep going.
Linda Fruity.
Well, in terms of achievements, we've had some big ones. Our robotics team that's associated with the school district has been rocking it internationally. We're starting to do some more work on dyslexia, which I'm very pleased about because reading is the center of everything, particularly in the early grades. So, I'm looking forward to an expansion of focus on dyslexia and just general improved reading in the early grades. Mental health at all levels. I know you've done some work at the high school. I'm hoping that we can offer more mental health for kids who are not, more mental health services for kids, available for kids who are not already identified as needing them. So, for just a typical child who maybe needs some help at the early grade, that would be great to add. And, anyway, I have two seconds left. Go Hornets, great sports team.
Sarah Patzloff.
We've actually done some pretty amazing things. I think one of the big things that was very controversial at the time was new start times and that they were implemented and that all the kids showed up at the right time, and, you know, we moved forward. And I think that's really wonderful, even though it wasn't a unanimous decision in our community. I have to agree on the mental health. I think that is such a critical issue for our kids, and so having new resources for families to access and kids to access, I think, has been really important. It was actually exciting to see a new test with our ACTs this year, excuse me, not ACTs, with our MCA's this year in our science 11th grade biology test. And we tried a new program where we incentivized kids so that they actually showed up and really wanted to participate in the test, and we saw some great success. And the really exciting part for me, when they shared this with us, was we saw success for all kids, kids that are often under...
Your time is up.
Julie Green. So, I'm going to start first with some amazing leadership opportunities that we have in Edina and some successes we've had this last year. So, over at Highlands, we've got fifth graders that are leading teams of first through fourth graders in science. Over at Concord, my kid was voted mayor of her class, but worked together with the class to get new paper towel options, which for third graders is a big deal. And then, over at South, we've got 25% of our student body over there doing formal volunteer leadership roles. And then, of course, at the high school, we have an amazing band program, and last year, along with the other 62 years plus, they put on a Pops concert, and they run it. Those kids run that concert. It's the biggest fundraiser of the year, and it's an amazing thing to see them creating, running rehearsals, running teamwork, and having an opportunity to run something while you're, you know, 17 years old.
Thank you. Your time is up.
Thanks.
Lenny Wallen-Friedman.
All right. The list keeps getting longer. So, one of the good things we've done, public feedback on the strategic plan, going out and get community input. The biology MCA telling students that you can make this count as part of your final proficiency went from the mid-'70s to mid-'90s. New start times, mental health programs, extracurriculars. We continue to do well in both sports and extracurricular. For example, the robotics team won a national award, maybe international, sorry. We hired new people, John Tope in the business office, Brian Bass, an AP at Concord, AP, Assistant Principal at Concord. We've rolled out Singapore math in the elementary school, which is going to be transformative in terms of our math program. We've worked on making changes in early literacy, which will also show dividends. And I'm done. I will stop there.
Lou Nanny. As I alluded to in my opening statement, obviously, the robotics program, sports, band, that's all amazing, and, you know, it was probably the best year we've had in quite some time. But on another note, I forgot what his name was at the Teacher Appreciation Day, but the kid who was the Hornet, I think he did an amazing job of partnering with the Special Ed Group at their schools, and that's something that I did back in the day, and I love to see that. So, I think, you know, internal groups as well as parental interest externally. I think the parents of Edina, from whatever side of the aisle you're on, have done an amazing job getting their voice heard and organizing, and I would love to see that continue with board and administration as well.
Thank you, candidates. There will be 60 seconds to respond to this next question, and this is going to start with Sarah Patzloff. What specific metrics should Edina Public Schools use to measure success for our students? So, what specific metrics should Edina Public Schools use to measure success for our students? Sarah Patzloff.
Well, this is a great question because this is something the board is actually grappling with and have been for a while. As part of the strategic plan, we've agreed that we will come to a decision on how we look at success. How do we define it? And we need to create a dashboard because these metrics should be public for everyone to see. Now, we have a lot of different things that we can look at. As we know, the kids take MAP tests, third through eighth. There are the MCA tests that are done across the system as well, different tests at different years in our kids' lives. There are the day-to-day assessments that our teachers see. There's the COGAT, which I'd like to see come back, which is a test that gives us a better indication of kids' ability. And we need to find a balance of all of these and make sure that we're using them to understand where we're going as a district and to show accountability to our community. There is no simple bullet answer to this, but we have to come to an agreement.
Linda Fruity.
I agree with what Sarah was saying. I would, MAP would be following a student over time, so it's related to growth, which is most important for me. I would also ask, again, any individual board member can't control this, but I would... I would also ask, again, any individual board member can't control this, but I would advocate for, for having MAPs on the, in the, either spring to spring or fall to spring so that a teacher can use them to help guide instruction through the school year. MCAs, of course, are state mandated. We have no choice about those, but they help us know system-wide how we're doing. COGATs, I agree with Sarah that we would definitely need to, to, would, I would advocate for, again, I don't get to decide, but I would advocate for a re-institution of COGAT so that we know baselines for kids. Oh, I thought 15. Okay. So a mix of measures, but then also the most important thing is for them to be publicly available so that we can look, every, all of us can look to make sure that our, our actions are matching our intentions.
Thank you. Your time is up.
Janie Shaw.
I think defining success is really about understanding where students are at and where we want them to go and where they want to go. I think, as was mentioned, that we need to first and foremost come to a common definition of success. And that is going to come from us setting our strategic priorities, setting our goals, setting our mission. I think that the metrics that we use, as Sarah mentioned, are going to have to be balanced. They are going to have to include an academic component, which is standardized tests, as well as ongoing classroom assessment information. I believe there also should be a social emotional component to that so that the success of the child is looking beyond just a test score. I think when we talk about this, we need to involve students in the conversation. I think right now, there's a lot of work being done for students to set their own goals, to give opportunities for feedback, and to really set their intentions and follow through on their personal goals.
Lenny Wallen Friedman.
So I believe that we should have both traditional academic metrics as well as non-academic metrics. So when I look at academic metrics, I would look at are students achieving growth from year to year? Are they achieving growth as the teacher sees that in the classroom? I would look at ACT scores. I would look at college readiness. Are, do our, do our kids have, are they ready for college when they graduate? I would look at mental health. Our high school statistics show that mental health is a particularly big issue. And so we need to be able to say when our students leave that they have the knowledge to handle stress, prepare for it. We should make sure that our kids are ready for the next stage. So now we're into non-academic, which is are you ready to work in a diverse world? So that when our kids leave, they're not going to necessarily stay in Edina. They're going to work in a corporate room. They're going to work in, in a, potentially any type of environment that's going to be particularly diverse. And we can do that by post-graduation surveys.
Thank you.
Julie Green.
I think this is a tough question because what looks, what success looks like for one student is going to look different for another. It's not a simple calculation, and metrics alone can't, can't be the only defining moment that we have for kids. So when we talk about defining success and looking at metrics as a district, the number one thing I think we always have to remember is that we are talking about kids, our kids. So what would a report card made by us, for us, look like? I think it would take more than 60 seconds to answer, but if I had my vision, it would be a hybrid of measurements with a variety of outcomes for kids. And of course, it'd be very important to have those built-in metrics of academic achievement and academic growth for each student, but I'd also add in things that are critical for success. Icar values, social and emotional intelligence, willingness to learn, leadership, workload management. I think that all absolutely needs to be part of our metric system.
Lou Nanny.
We're all so fortunate to live in Edina. I mean, we have all the resources at our disposal, but success is completely on an individual basis, and it's quantitative and qualitative. So qualitatively, are students proud to be a Hornet? I think that's how we measure success on that end. But quantitatively, from the strat plan, I mean, it says we have a decrease in MAP, MCA, and ELL, and special ed proficiency, and we need to add the COGAT. And I'm going to disagree with Lenny because the ACT scores, I do believe we have so many resources at our avail, at our disposal where we oftentimes, I've heard of parents paying thousands of dollars to increase their kids' chance, not like they did in California and Felicity Huffman, but to increase their ACT scores. And that, for me, does not define success if you have to pay for it. So I just think all data should be made public, and we should hold our students accountable on a statewide basis.
Thank you. You will each have 90 seconds to respond to this next general question. On this question, we're going to start with Lou Nanny. Data-driven decision-making is a popular topic amongst candidates. Specifically, what data do you think we should use and to drive what decisions?
Oh, I'm dead.
Okay. One more time. Data-driven decision-making is a popular topic amongst candidates. Specifically, what data do you think we should use and to drive what decisions? Lou Nanny.
We've been first for essentially five decades, and I fail to agree with data being used in the last curriculum that we've implemented because, quite honestly, it has not shown or proven to do us any justice. So what I think we have to do is we have to use data that's tried and true and only implement what's worked on a statewide basis. Like, from a personalized learning standpoint, no public school of significant size has shown this to be of a benefit. And I feel like Edina should never be implementing anything that has no data to back it.
Sarah Patzloff.
We do like to talk about data-driven decisions, but I think there's a reason for that because they're important. It takes out the feelings and puts it into a more concrete place when you're making decisions. But there's a lot of different things. We already just talked about test scores and how we look at that. And one of the things that I think is critical with that, that I didn't mention before, the reason the COGAT really can be helpful for our teachers is when kids are taping, taking MAP tests or MCAs or standardized tests, to be able to go back and look at that COGAT and see what their trajectory should look like. And if kids aren't meeting that trajectory, we need to be stepping in and helping them to get to where they should be. But there's a lot of other things. We do surveys in this district, and we need to make them public and open them up so that parents can see feedback from teachers, from parents, from students. Enrollment numbers. We've got to watch our enrollment numbers. We have been a blessed district on this subject until recently. We have lost students. So then it's understanding why are we losing those students? Because if we're losing students, we could be losing confidence in our schools. And I want to understand that so that we can address that. Other data that we can take a look at is simply, you know, talking to our staff, talking to our district administrators, and taking all of this data, putting it into a dashboard, and helping us to understand. So as we have the test scores and we have the survey feedback-
Thank you. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Linda Friedy.
Well, others have touched on some of the key points. I agree. I think that the biggest thing we can do differently perhaps in the future than we've done in the past is when we set out for doing a new initiative, we should attach expectations to it so that we can measure to see whether or not what we're doing and spending money on and experimenting on our kids in some cases is working or not. So I would expect that, that at the, from a board level, they would expect that the, anything that the, that is, that the administration is recommending that we try, that going into it, we ask for, for, again, metrics be attached. I agree, parent surveys are important. We need to be doing them and then, and then sharing them with the community. We want to know in detail what people think about our schools. I think when enrollment, someone, someone touched on, I think Sarah touched on enrollment. I think when a family leaves, chooses to leave our district, that we owe them, and we, we owe them an opportunity to tell us why. I think it's actually a disrespect issue. They've shared their children and their, their children with us for years, their precious children, and we need to understand why they're leaving us. And they can, you know, as a customer, we, they're our, they were a customer for some period of time, and we want to know why they're not there. Student surveys, of course, in addition to all the normal metrics of, of, of MCA, MAP score, ACT scores, AP broken down, AP scores broken down by threes, fours, and fives, so we really know if when we try new things, is what we're intending working.
Julie Green.
So I want to talk about the elephant in the room, our MCA scores. So as Linda said, our MCA tests are only state standards that we adhere to. We have to take them. And state standards are super important. Those results are linked to the, our state measurements and our funding. They're used as a comparison tool for ranking our district in U.S. News and World Report. And that is linked to our home values, right? Because you go on to look in a district and you see where we're ranked. Students can also opt out. Edina's been trending down in participation at the high school, along with a lot of other districts in our state. Each opt-out counts as a non-proficient in the results. I'm going to say that again. Each opt-out counts as non-proficient in our results. So why would a kid opt out? And I can't answer for anyone, but I know my 11th grader, in the spring, that MCA test fell within 13 other tests, all linked to her personal achievement. So what Edina did, and Edina teachers, I credit for this, is they built in an incentive. They know that kids care about their GPAs, not the MCAs. So if you took that MCA high school science exam and you scored a 90%, Sarah mentioned this, or above, and that showed that you met all state competencies for an 11th grader in science, then you could replace your final test score with, in science, with an A. And our scores jumped. So do we think our students learned that much more in science that year?
Thank you. Your time is up.
Lenny Wallen Friedman.
All right. So we're going to use different data in different scenarios. And so we talk about data for teachers, we talk about data for the district, and we talk about data for parents. I'm going to start with the most important, which is data for teachers. So the first step of data for teachers is homework. The homework gives feedback to the teacher in terms of whether the student is following the material. The second data point for teachers is formative assessments, another touch point for teachers to learn whether the students are understanding the material. The third data point is summative tests, another touch point for teachers to understand whether the students are learning the, learning the material. So that's the most important data. Then we have data when we have a new program. If you set up a new program, you would want to set up metrics. You would say, okay, here's a new program we have. What is the objective of this program? And you would then set up data depending upon the objective. And so, for example, if it's to create greater rigor, then you would have a survey that's statistically valid towards your students that said, does this provide greater challenge? And so we have to have metrics to go along with new programs. Next, we have overall growth. We take a look at MAP scores as we look at the district, and we say, okay, now, as we look at growth, are each of the sections or sectors of our community meeting their growth targets? We have national norms that we're all aware of for MAP growth norms. That's another data point. Parents, we should have information that's available to parents so they understand what is happening in the district. They're not driving what we do in the district, but they should have data so they understand what we're doing.
Janie Shaw.
I love talking about data. I have a lot of data background. So I think at a high level, the board should be looking at a whole host of different various forms of data. They're looking at achievement, growth, enrollment, satisfaction, safety data. All of that is being looked at at a high level to ensure that our district is making progress towards our goals. And I do believe that that data, there should be more transparency towards that data. At a site level, our leadership, our leadership team is mining more into that data. They're, they're layering in different levels to identify trends, to find patterns, and to find gaps. And they're doing this to ensure that our classes are meeting the needs of our students and that the supports are there to meet the needs of our students. But day-to-day, for teachers who have the most effective cause on student achievement, they are constantly mining data. Every single day, they are looking at academic data that's formative, homework, summative, testing. They're looking at attendance. They're looking at behavior. They are collecting all of this very important data. But what we need to offer them as a board is policy that gives them time, opportunities to talk to each other, opportunities to work together to find solutions when gaps are identified. These insights are the key to figuring out how to make choices-
Thank you. Your time is up.
Thank you. Now for another lightning round. Candidates, please have your paddles ready to go. Remember, these are yes or no answers only. The following set of yes/no questions are aimed at understanding what have you done to prepare for potentially being a school board member? In the last year, have you visited at least one elementary, one middle school, and the high school in Edina Public Schools?
Yes.
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 Have you volunteered in our schools in the last 18 months?
Yes and no. I tutor. Oh, no. That's volunteering. Otherwise, no.
Yes.
Nope.
Yes.
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 Have you spoken to or met with any building principals to understand their goals and challenges for their respective sites in the last year?
No.
Yes.
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 Have you spoken to or met with any teachers to understand their goals and challenges for their respective classrooms in the last year?
Yes.
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 Have you spoken to or met with any district staff besides the superintendent to understand their goals and challenges within their district domains in the last year?
Yes.
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 Have you attended at least one board work session and one regular board meeting in the last year?
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
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 Have you read any of the Minnesota Department of Education state standards for elementary, middle, or high school?
Yes.
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 Thank you. We're going to go back to the general questions. On this next question, you will have 60 seconds to respond, 60 seconds. And on this one, we're going to start with Sarah Patzloff. What one thing in the budget would you like to add and one thing you would consider cutting? What one thing in the budget would you like to add and what one thing would you consider cutting? Sarah Patzloff.
Well, honestly, that answer is, is almost impossible to really answer. I mean, as a, as a single thing. We, as a board, get a, get a 50-some page summative of where our budget dollars go by category, by fund, by all the different things. And they do vary from year to year, but they also have their consistencies as well, whether it's special education funding, funding for busing, for all the different things that we fund. So I can't say that there is the one thing I would add or the one thing that I would take away. What I would want to understand from every department, from every administrator recommending changes to the budget is why? How will it affect kids? And then percentage-wise, as we look at cuts, and actually, I was just meeting with a special ed parent yesterday, when we're making these cuts and it's affecting children, how are we finding the, the best ways to?
Lou Nanny.
Yeah, I mean, as a school board, we're obviously in charge of the budget, and it's all for the kids ultimately. So after looking at some of the data on the website, I realized we have more other, which is non-licensed, teachers, liaisons, et cetera. And we have more of those than we do teachers, whereas Minnetonka is right side up on that. So I would add more teachers, more- So I would add more teachers, more opportunities for classes, as well as smaller class sizes. And I would cut from the "other" bucket. But I would obviously have to dig in more on that aspect to see what exactly it entails.
Janie Shaw.
This is a really hard one. I think if I was to take my lens and apply it across our district, the one thing I would add would be an additional staff person to coordinate and facilitate 504 plans across our district. I think that is an area that we are sorely lacking on. I think if we are to, if I was to cut something, that's really hard because we have a pretty lean budget, I would cut whatever bucket pays for a lot of the data requests that come into our district that maybe don't have benefit to our schools and to our students.
Julie Green.
I agree with everyone up here. This is a really tough question, and really tough to answer without looking and being part of our budget committee and know all the nuances of our financials. But one thing that does jump to mind off the top of my head is our special education budget. They have seen cutbacks of $300,000 to $400,000 over the last three years, and we've also grown 18% over that same timeframe. So if I were to add something, I would put that money back that we had to cut. Thanks.
Linda Friedy.
So several people here talked about the 504s and special education costing us more. I think the answer to some of that is more of a focus on earlier intervention. So because earlier intervention, particularly in the reading area, will cut down on the number of kids who are referred for special ed services. Reading is the number-one driver of our high special education costs. So enhancing our intervention services, which I was an intervention teacher, and I know the district did a review of their intervention services over this year, and they said that what we have is a consistency of inconsistency. And I knew that as a teacher as well. So improving early intervention will decrease the need for special ed dollars spent. And if we just orient all of our spending towards teachers and classrooms, we will let the administration figure out where to take it from, or we can work collaboratively. I don't get to decide where to take it from, but it needs to be oriented towards teaching.
Thank you.
Lenny Wallen-Friedman.
So if I was going to look at one area, I would look at the area where our students are not performing as well. So I would take a look at the group of students that we have categorized as not yet meeting proficiency. Within that area, the first thing I would do is I would go to the teachers and the experts and say, okay, so within that area, what's the best thing to do? Is it beefing up intervention? Is it creating a summer program so that we stem summer reading loss? So it's that lower-performing group that I would look at. Now, in terms of cuts, this one's pretty hard because we've made a lot of cuts over the past few years. Those cuts have generally stayed away from the classroom, but there's not a lot of areas left outside the classroom. So if I was forced to pick something, I actually would take a look at busing. And I would look at busing and the concept of where can we reduce busing costs that will not cause a safety issue or alter our start times? And I think that there are probably areas in that particular direction.
Thank you. You will each have 90 seconds to respond to this next question. On this one, we're going to begin with Lenny Wallen-Friedman. How can we meet the diverse needs of our students with a limited and declining budget? Specifically, how would you go about prioritizing the needs of special ed, GT, proficient, and non-proficient learners? How can we meet the diverse needs of our students with a limited and declining budget? Specifically, how would you go about prioritizing the needs of special ed, GT, proficient, and non-proficient learners?
So in terms of actual dollars, we don't have a declining budget. We may have a declining budget because of inflation, but in terms of actual dollars, it's not declining. So if I were going to be forced to rank these, again, I would start with the students that aren't proficient. And I would say, what extra resources can we put towards those particular students? And it isn't necessarily additional dollars. For example, as noted, our intervention programs have been inconsistent, so I would make those intervention programs more consistent. I would look at liaisons to reach students who are underrepresented. That wasn't mentioned, but that's an area that I think that we need to take a look at. Special ed, again, to the extent that we can be smarter in how we're using our dollars, that's another area. I think you asked about gifted. There are multiple ways that we can reach gifted students with the same dollars. We're experimenting with compacted classes, which means doing a three-year program in two years. That both advances students and frees up time and energy at the high school for them to take either more advanced courses or to potentially do an internship. But again, in terms of order, non-proficient, special ed, liaisons, and GT services. Thank you.
Linda Friedy.
Well, I wouldn't be able to put them in rank order because I believe that our number-one, we have to meet the needs of all learners. So I would not, I think the way the question is structured, you're asking for a prioritization, meaning one group gets through a dozen groups. I think we can do it all with the money that we have. Again, back to the previous question, improving our intervention services, and actually, our tier-one normal classroom services, particularly around literacy, will help diminish the need for special ed and 504 plans, which are skyrocketing. In fact, I think we're way, in the last, I don't want to quote statistics here, but it's a shocking increase over the last five years. I think that one of the ways we can help is to follow RTI process. So our previous strategic plan called for us to use RTI process to organize our students to get the services they need. We're not actually following that anymore. We went to a personalized learning model, and so it's spotty. We aren't using RTI process. I think that the individual needs of the kids at the high end, the low end, and the middle can be met through RTI process. And I spoke with the superintendent in a meeting, and he agreed with me that he believed that RTI process with Fidelity was, he said, I love RTI when done with Fidelity. I know in my previous work in Cornea, we were rock stars. I think my colleagues and I, back a number of years ago with RTI, can help serve the needs of all students.
Julie Green.
Can we repeat the question again?
How can we meet the diverse needs of our students with a limited and declining budget? Specifically, how would you go about prioritizing the needs of special ed, GT, proficient, and non-proficient learners?
I think this is a tough question, and I think this is why it's really important that we get our strategic direction right, and that we have a big picture that we're looking at so that we're able to then prioritize how everything fits in. It's tough to rank them because I would hope that as we make decisions on different groups, that we do look at everybody, because every student in Edina, in our schools, is important and should have a voice at the table, I think. So the number-one thing, though, that pops to my mind is growth, and that comes to, like, non-proficient. So who is struggling the most? How do we build them up? Not losing sight of everything else that's going really well, but how do we help support that? And I think that's why it's super important to have a strategic plan that gets us in the right direction. Thanks.
Lou Nanny.
Well, this kind of plays off of last question on how to allocate budget dollars. But in order to meet the diverse needs of students with, I'm just going to say, a thin budget, I really think we have to make a focus on real-life and applicable courses such as a special ed buddy-buddy program. When I was in high school, I did an independent study with Doc Locke, and it was the best time of my life, best class. I was in the GM class with the special ed students, and the following year, there were more and more kids signing up for this. And that's a way to keep budget thin, as well as doing good within the school and the community. And then from, you know, non-proficient, proficient, and gifted, we have to ensure that we're looking at all gender, races, ability on the same level. They're all ones and zeros, it's binary. And I honestly think we have to offer traditional honors and AP courses. And for those who are non-proficient, we have to make sure we catch them early. Otherwise, we're doing them a disservice, and it'll take them years and years to get back to where they need to.
Sarah Patzloff.
Well, I wholeheartedly agree that prioritizing like this is difficult. And honestly, I think it's unethical to prioritize one group or another. We need to reach all kids, and we need to reach them where they are, and we need to let them rise to their highest potential. And that's all kids. Doesn't matter, when I look at this list, you know, your proficient kids, your kids in the middle, which are so many of our kids, we need to give them access to push them and keep them growing. But we can't ignore our non-proficient kids. We had a system called RTI, which is Response to Intervention. Now we call it MTSS. The bottom line is, we need to be intervening. And the earlier we do it, the better, because the second we let these kids get behind, it's that much harder to catch up. Our special ed kids, they take a big chunk of the budget, but that's okay, because they deserve an education too, and we need to meet their needs. GT kids, they, it seems like, and I've heard people say, well, they have so much, they're already advanced. They still deserve a good education and deserve to be able to grow as well. We also need to give kids choices and put them where they need to be so that they can have that access. As a last thing that I just wanted to point out, my daughter tutors a sixth-grade student at Valley View to help her with clarinet. This is a free.
Thank you, your time is up.
Shoot, sorry.
Janie Shaw.
I'm going to agree with Julie on this, that this really needs to be a part of our strategic planning work. When we're operating from a shared set of priorities, we're not only agreeing upon what we do prioritize, but that also means we're agreeing upon what we don't prioritize on. Every one of those groups has, every one of those groups does have needs. And unfortunately, the reality is, at some point, some needs are going to be, need to be prioritized when we are operating in a limited budget, or if we have to make adjustments. What needs to happen, though, is that in those decisions, a true needs assessment for all groups needs to be brought to the table. There's enough information on the table for a board or for the administration to make decisions, understanding how initiatives or programs will affect and have the most impact on the highest number of students. It has to be a balanced decision, it has to be an equitable decision, and it needs to support all learners. I think that, I think that they are hard decisions. I agree. And I think that truly understanding what the needs of all groups are, when you bring things like this to the table, are important. Because as Sarah mentioned, it is unethical to make a decision for one group without understanding the needs of another group.
Thank you. You will each have 60 seconds to respond to this next question. On this one, we're going to start with Julie Green. What are your thoughts on the achievement gap and how our district can reduce this gap? Specifically, what do you think is needed to close the gap? What are your thoughts on the achievement gap and how our district can reduce this gap? Specifically, what do you think is needed to close this gap? Julie Green.
This is a super-important question. The achievement gap is real. And when I talk with a student of color who tells me that she sees barriers to her educational path, I believe her. And then when I read sound research and data that backs up those sentiments, I believe the data. I think we have an opportunity as a district to be a leader in our state, to say, here's what we're willing to do, here's where we're going to go. The MCA scores that I had talked about, one of the things I didn't mention was that that jump in science, our students of color jumped 50%. So that is a tiny, tiny sliver of what could happen if we connect the dots between kids and incentive and what that looks like. And what was the other part?
Thank you, your time is up.
Okay. Thanks.
Lou Nanny.
Yeah, obviously, the achievement gap is real, but it doesn't have to be a gap through race, through gender, through any of these things. And quite honestly, I believe that the gap should not close from the top down, it has to close from the bottom up. And as of now, and as of late, we've been trying to personally, I believe, close the gap from the top down. It's tough, but some of the scores and statewide standards reflect this. But what I think we need to do is ensure that the bottom is being lifted to their full potential so that we can push these kids through and help them reach as much as they possibly can. Yeah, I mean, I think we just really have to focus on them early and often and ensure that the gap does close from the bottom up.
So I was actually recently challenged by someone to learn more about this gap that exists in the achievement levels of some of our minority and lower-income students. And also, I think this relates to the gaps that exist in some of our, like, reading gaps or other learning gaps. We do have successes in our district, but we also have a lot of work to do. We need to make this a district-wide priority and keep it there. What that looks like to me is continuing work on enhancing cultural competence, access to qualified staff for our students, family outreach. In the classroom, it means giving more opportunity to challenging and engaging curriculum around our standards. And most important, ensuring a system of support, so not just kids that are failing, but kids that aren't being offered opportunities for growth. Ultimately, what we want is this systematic approach to identifying the gaps. And the only way that this can happen is if we build flexibility into our schedules and an opportunity to layer in attributes to the data.
Thank you, your time is up.
Linda Friedy.
Well, this is my wheelhouse, because that's what I did for my work, and I'm proud of the work that we did. I think it comes with the belief that it can be done. And I have heard some people in the district have said things like, kind of blamed our decline on scores on the fact that we have changing demographics. And I fundamentally and categorically refuse to accept that as something. All kids can learn. You can take a kid, a child at the 20th percentile and take him to the 80th percentile. I did it all day, every day, throughout my career. We need to be able to, as someone mentioned here, we have opportunities with our scheduling to make sure kids can get access to great services. We need to have professional development, more robust professional development for intervention teachers. We need to improve our outside-of-school options, including Saturday school or summer programming. I think sometimes we check boxes and say we're doing some of it, but I think it could be more robust. Those are three areas, of course, including outreach to parents and such, but.
Thank you.
Lenny Wallen-Friedman.
So first, I want to make it perfectly clear that we have not been trying to close the achievement gap by lowering the achievement of the high achievers. So that misstates the importance that we place on our high achievers, and it misstates the success of our high achievers. So having said that, what we need to do is, again, work on our intervention programs because they have not been as consistent as they should be. I think another thing, and by the way, each of these recommendations I make are going to be prefaced with, I want to talk to our teachers to get their perspective on what's the best particular avenue to follow. But intervention, summer loss, again, statistics show kids, when they leave school in May, if they don't have enrichment over the summer, they come to school further behind in September. Early intervention, preschool programs that reach kids before kindergarten and that stress that elementary years, if we catch them then, they'll be ready to roll.
Sarah Patzloff.
I so agree with Linda. And as I've gotten to know Linda, and she's shared that, her stories are amazing. But I totally agree, there has to be belief. We have to believe in all of our students, and that means every kid that walks through the door, we have high hopes for them to achieve their best. We need to remove barriers. We need to remove barriers. But to do that, we have to understand the why. And that is what I'm always going to go back to as a board member, because I am not the expert on the, on how to close the gap. But why do we continue to see this? We have been focusing on this during my eight years on the board in our district, yet we have not closed the achievement gap. So I ask, why do we continue with the same programs if they're not working? We need to examine those programs and understand why these kids aren't growing. And then, we need to address those whys. But if we don't ask the why and we make assumptions of why this gap is there, we're never going to close the gap.
Thank you. On this next general question, there's going to be 60 seconds to respond. And we're going to start with Linda Friedy. In a time of limited resources and increasing expenses, what ideas do you have to increase revenue for our district?
Couple of areas of opportunity or busing, I think it's been talked about briefly. We bus more kids than we need to bus. We bus a lot of kids who live close to schools. I'm not suggesting that we don't need to bus them, but perhaps there could be a pay or fee model for that, because there's a huge amount of money. We're an outlier compared to other neighboring districts on busing. It's an opportunity for increasing revenue. Also, offloading as much as possible to, you know, creative, creative, you have a community that's a well-to-do community, we, there's some partnership opportunities with, throughout our community, for certain. Also, stemming some, the decline in enrollment. Every time we lose a student, we're losing a large, many thousands of dollars. So stemming that will, will help the budget. Last year, I think, I thought it was eight or $900,000 of kids who left, which caused some budgetary problems for us. So those are the three big ones right now.
Sarah Patzloff.
Before I was on the board, I participated in a group called BURG, Budget Reduction, Reallocation, and Revenue Generation. And the revenue generation was what this question is all about. Well, Linda stole my answer on the busing, I could not agree more. We need to figure that out, and we've actually told the administration that we need a study done on busing that covers all the different areas. Safety being key, working with our city, but also looking at, what is the state law? And then, where are we spending dollars that we don't necessarily need to be spending? And start to act, look to our parents to actually say, we need to charge for busing, because it's coming out of our general budget, which means it's coming out of our classrooms. Enrollment as well, if we lose students, we lose funds. And then, it's the creative ideas. And I'll just finish quickly. A student who doesn't have access to getting outside help, wanting to join in sixth grade to the band, when you typically start in fifth grade, my daughter helping them is a creative way... So sorry!
Lou Nanny.
Yeah, well, with limited resources and increased expenses, I think, you know, Linda hit the nail on the head by speaking about busing. I've met with few parents who are completely fine with paying for use, primarily because the only reason is safety for their kid. They don't want their child walking less than .7 miles in negative temperature weather, and nor would I. I mean, I have a 16-month-old, and if something like this happened over the summer, I'd be pretty upset. But it's something I'd be willing to pay for. And then, I believe it's $8,300 per student, or somewhere around there, that we lose for each individual who leaves the community. And obviously, we have to do our best to keep resident students within. And we need to get money from alumni, such as donors to the Hornets Nest. I mean, I know a lot of individuals who donated to the Hornets Nest, but if we can reallocate some of those funds, I believe we can definitely drum up some support from our community.
Lenny Wallen-Friedman.
So I will mention busing, but understand, that's going to be a nominal difference. You can't raise a lot of money through busing, it costs money to actually provide busing services. So what I would say is, one of the things we need to do is to be better at explaining who we are and where we're successful. I think that over the years, we've sat there and said, we're Edina, and, and that's it. Now, we need to say, we're Edina, here's where we're successful. This will actually improve our reputation, it will increase our enrollment, and that will bring in additional revenue. I'm going to give a shout-out to Edina Give and Go and the Ed Fund. Those are other areas that we can do fundraising and support our district. And then, the last area is, as we develop areas of expertise, we can run seminars and charge other districts to come here and learn how to do things right. And there are districts that do this and raise hundreds of thousands of dollars doing it. That's something that we can look at.
Janie Shaw. So I will also echo the busing piece, and I will add on top of that, maybe looking at activity busing that revolves around multiple student activities, because if you've ever driven by the high school after, at the end of the day, it's tough. I think another option would be some more food service partnerships. Actually, getting more new facilities rentals through a lot of those new spaces that our tax dollars just paid for. I would look at more sponsorship opportunities within our school, leaning on our PTO partners, once again, the Ed Fund and Give and Go. And then, a piece that I've been passionate about and been working with, community ed on, is creating parent education opportunities and even student education opportunities and tutoring for students who have learning disabilities. There's a lot of information and support out there, but as parents, we don't have access to it from our school in the same way that, say, a parent from Groves would have. And if we could create those opportunities, I think a lot of us parents would be willing to pay for that.
Thank you, your time is up.
Julie Green.
This is a great question, because it's talking about, how do we increase funding? How do, where do we go to get more money for our schools? I see two ways. One, I would crowdsource. We have a wicked, smart, and dynamic community here. I would put the call out and say, what are your ideas? Someone could be sitting on something that would actually generate funds for our schools and solve different budget issues that we have. And then, number two, I would look at partnerships within our community. So a group of high school students went down to Target last year and spent the day doing STEM training, STEM intervention, and learned all sorts of different things. And that was a partnership. So could we become a hub for different companies all around us? Some CEOs live in our town. I think there's a lot of opportunity there with partnerships and kind of offsetting the cost, that would bring in more money. Thanks.
Thank you. We're now going to move back to the lightning round. This is a short one, but get your paddles ready to go. Remember that these are yes or no answers only. Do you know how the state funding formula works for public education?
Yes.
Pretty close.
Same.
Yes.
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 Do you know the per pupil amount the state provides for our district?
Pretty close. Yes.
Yes.
6312.
Yes.
Yes.
Sorry.
Do you know the total annual operating budget for Edina Public Schools?
Yes.
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 We're going to now move back to the general questions. You will each have 60 seconds to respond to the next question. On this one, we're going to start with Lenny Wallen-Friedman. What is your reaction to the current draft of the strategic plan? If you could make two changes, what would they be? Lenny Wallen-Friedman.
So this is great. I've attended every single one of the strategic forums that we have hosted for input from teachers, administrators, and parents. And from that, you know, it's kind of sort of sharpened my perspective of it. If I were to make a change to it, I would say that we need to make it clear that the strategic plan is designed to elevate the achievement of all students. The interpretation we're getting is that it's focused on advanced learners. And I think that we need to make sure that it is focused on achievement for all students. The other thing is, people have said that they really like that it talks about each individual student. And so, again, we need to keep that in mind, that although we're a district of 8,500 students, they are individuals, and we should be trying to get each of them to move forward in advance.
Sarah Patzloff.
Funny how we go first on this one. Obviously, Lenny and I were both involved in writing the, the current plan. And yes, I have been attending input sessions. And the, the three that I attended last week were all staff input sessions. And yes, we definitely will have to go back and clarify some things. And make sure that people realize this plan is for all students, not one group, as we've already answered in other questions before. Other changes, we're going to need to clarify what we mean by something, how we're going to measure it. That is the biggest thing I keep hearing, is how are you going to measure this? How will this roll out? And we actually had a discussion just within the board, when we were going to share what we chose to share with the community. There's a big stack of other information we could have shared of all the discussions and things that went in to get to this shortlist, that was this longer list at first. So that people could have a deeper, richer understanding of how we got there. So that will have to come as we...
Thank you, your time is up.
Julie Green.
Two things to change on the strategic plan. So my, my reading of the strategic plan and, and the forums that I've attended, it's pretty clear that the message is, it's all or nothing, kids. And I say that because, when I read it, like, page five, it says, "Academic performance is at the top for the state and region." Also, page five, "Be the district of choice for advanced learners." Period. What about everyone else? What happens if we come in second by .12? Are we a failure, then? I would change that. Number two, "The whole student and the focus of the well-being of all our students is hardly mentioned." Page six, "Promote overall student well-being, but it makes zero mention of mental health support and services for students." Jeff Jorgensen will tell you, one in five of our kids will have a diagnosable mental health issue. That's 1,600 kids. I changed that, too.
Janie Shaw. Well, Julie stole my answers, but I will echo what she said, that when I read the statement, "Be the district of choice for advanced learners," it punched me in the gut because I, that means I have one kid who is welcome here and one kid who isn't. And that's hard to hear. I think that when we decide we are the district of choice for all learners, our, other goals make sense. We are the district of choice for all learners because we set a high standard. We are the district of choice for all learners because we find, we, I can't think of a word, individual growth is important to us. Julie's answer on social emotional health was also important, but the other thing that was lacking is more information about what this means in support for our teachers. We talk about wanting to support them, we talk about wanting to see their professional growth, but there was just not a lot of detail given there. And I think it is owed to them that we spell that out a little bit more clearly.
Lou Nanny.
I mean, obviously, it looks pretty. Lenny and Sarah, I'm sure have done, you know, they've put a ton of work into something like this. And I'm glad that we do lay out some of the weaknesses and threats that are in here. And I know that a lot of it is just at face value. But to what Janie and Julie were saying, it does speak to mental health, but we do need quantifiable ways to counteract those issues. And I'm just glad that, you know, academic excellence and rigors on top, because we have been first for 50 years and we have slipped to 10th. And some people are content with that, but as an Edina resident and a product of the school system, I want to be back to first, and I want what's best for my son. And I want him to be able to choose what he is, what is best for him. So I'm going to keep myself out of that and remit myself. But I'm also glad that it speaks to the learning environment, whole student support, effective staff and leaders, meaning we want to attract and retain the best teachers we possibly can. And my time's up.
Linda Friedy.
Well, I've attended a lot of the work sessions, so I know they put a tremendous amount of thought into this. I think that I'm completely comfortable with the top line, which is the mission statement. And I think then, I mean, throughout this community involvement process, they're going to get some, as they're getting feed, they're getting feedback now about how to tighten up the screws. I think absolutely agree that we must let everyone understand that that mission statement is to educate each individual to reach their full potential. That's it. So the, the plan, the underlying, the support of the plan must, 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 must show that that, that throughout. So if there's an impression that it's one group against another, I'm completely, that needs to be solved. Also, I agree that we could beef up some mental health, health conversation within the plan. And again, in contrast to the previous strategic plan, I think there must be metrics attached to everything so that there's a more of a...
Thank you, your time is up.
Thank you. On this next general question, you will each have 60 seconds to respond. We're going to start with Lou Nanny on this question. At the recent League of Women Voters Forum, several candidates talked about the importance of collaborating with and getting input and feedback from teachers. With limited teacher contract hours, how do you plan to get teacher voice and input into board decision-making? Do we need that one again? At the recent League of Women Voters Forum, several candidates talked about the importance of collaborating with and getting input and feedback from teachers. With limited teacher contract hours, how do you plan to get teacher voice and input into board decision-making? Lou Nanny.
Well, ultimately, our main goal is to, you know, hire and fire the superintendent. And I hope that he is in constant communication with the teachers, so that we can bide for the teachers and do what's best for them. Ultimately, our decisions kind of trickle down to the teachers, and we want to make their jobs as easy as possible. We want to hold them accountable as well. So I think, yes, we do have to collaborate through teachers, but with limited contract hours, unfortunately, it's going to have to come through the superintendent. And from what I've been hearing is, there's not a lot of, I should say, accountability between the administration and teachers. And I hope that we can change that, because ultimately, we're all in this together and we all want what's best for the kids. And that's to make sure that teachers are happy doing what they do best.
Janie Shaw.
So our teachers are really our experts. They're the ones that drive the work, and I do believe that their voice at the table is really necessary when we are looking to achieve our goals. I think this, getting that voice to the table is going to have to include a lot of creative solutions. And I think most importantly, it's going to have to include their voice as to tell us what makes the most sense for them. I think we can think outside of the box and talk about potentially having some sort of parking lot where issues can be discussed interactively with board members or with administration and board members. I think thinking about how they use specific tools during the day and some of the technologies that they are using, like the flip grid, I think we can think creatively about that. Most importantly, what I think it means is us coming to them sometimes and finding opportunities for the board, not only to have a conversation with them, but in their space and in their environment and in what they do.
Thank you, your time is up.
Lenny Wallen-Friedman.
So I agree that we need teachers' input. I'm not sure I agree with, complete with the, with the underlying premise that our teachers are not going to participate based upon contract hours. I have found our teachers to be incredibly dedicated and quite willing to show up when asked to attend and participate. So having said that, here are the things that we do, and here are things that we're going to continue to do. We have meet and confer meetings between a subset of the school board and a subset of the teachers to talk about issues. We have had, recently had teachers attend work sessions where they met with the board and discussed curriculum and the basis and what they're doing in the classroom. We have school improvement plans that are being shared with the school board. We have meetings between the governing board and the school board to talk about issues within the district. And then, the other thing is, I have been invited by teachers, and I would expect others, to go to classrooms and see what's happening in the classroom. And that's very educational for the board, and it provides an opportunity to see what's happening and get feedback.
Thank you, your time is up.
Julie Green.
So I think education is also action, and you see what's going on. Without taking any teacher time, because that was asked of the question... Without taking any teacher time, because that was asked of the question, I think you go and you sit in the back of the class and you see what goes on. And that's what I did last spring. I went and sat over in a personalized learning class at Southview. I was invited in by the teacher and I sat in the back. And I got to see for myself, how does this shake out? What does it look like? And it was incredible to watch a sixth grade class not enriched and the teacher take them from, we're going to do a paper about the Dust Bowl, come up with a really important, high-level question on what that looks like and all the different personalized learning and engagement that was going on. And I watched the transformation of those kids asking questions. What if the Dust Bowl didn't happen? What if the Dust Bowl happened today? That became the basis of their paper, not just spitting facts out about something that happened, but the implication of that.
Thank you, your time is up.
Thanks.
Linda Friedy.
Well, I have, one of the motivating forces in getting me here, here, is that I am a teacher and I have a lot of teacher colleagues. So first thing is, I would start inviting them to support meetings. I think it shocked, I'm kind of embarrassed myself. In 15 years of teaching, I spent very little time in the boardroom and I really didn't understand the process the way I understand over the last year when I was watching them make the sausage and the work sessions and such. So I think having it feel comfortable to be here. I think, again, from the ground, I would say that frequently, at the ground level, at least at the elementary schools, there always feels, there has felt like there's a disconnect between school, teacher and administration and teacher and board. I mean, it's not even thought that they're paying, there's a feeling of disconnect all through the system that could be improved upon. And that would include administrators spending more time in the schools, principals having more time to spend in the classrooms. And definitely-
Thank you, your time is up. Sarah Patzloff.
So the first part of this, trying to find time in a very limited time and everybody's busy. And our teachers actually do put in a ton of extra time beyond the standard workday. We do have a couple of things that have been mentioned, but my concern there is, is that all the teacher's voice? It's with the union governing board. And that's whether it's meet and confer or the board slash governing board, when we have those meetings, it's not every teacher. So I, for the first time about two months ago, teachers came to a meeting, we were talking about a specific class and we were hearing feedback on it. And to have them in the room and be able to ask questions of them directly was really helpful. And I'd like to see us do more of that. I'm all for getting in the classrooms. I love to do that and watch what's going on. But we need to work together to make this happen. And that means understanding that we're all on the same page. And I'm really hoping that the strategic plan allows us-
Thank you, your time is up. Thank you. This is going to be the last lightning round, so just grab your paddles for the last time. And again, these are yes or no answers only. Should teachers and principals have input into deciding what courses are offered in their buildings?
Yes.
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 Should the district teaching and learning department be involved when the board is crafting policy regarding new course offerings?
Yes.
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 Should the school board be involved in selecting literature or textbooks for the classroom?
No.
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 Yes.
No.
No.
Do you think our current offerings provide enough rigor for our students?
No.
Yes.
No.
No.
Yes. Do you think our current offerings provide enough intervention and learner support for our students?
No.
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 If they had the proper training, safety protocol and licensure, do you think teachers should be allowed to have guns in their classrooms for protection?
No.
No.
Yes.
No.
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 This is the last general question. And then we're going to move on to closing statements. So in this last general question, you will have 60 seconds to respond. And on this one, we're going to start with Janie Shaw. If Edina Public Schools received a $1 million grant, how do you want to spend it? So if Edina Public Schools received a $1 million grant, how do you want to spend it? Janie Shaw.
I'm going to go back to one of those areas that I'm pretty passionate about. That is going to be our kids who have learning disabilities. There is a subset, so everyone understands, of kids who have learning disabilities but do not qualify for special education support. And what we need, what I would do with a million dollars, would be to bring in more substantial systems of assistive technology for our students. Even if students have a good base foundation, if they have learning disabilities, it doesn't matter how high up they go in our system, they will always need supports. Right now, those supports are being managed by their parents. And with a million dollars, I think I would try to bring in a grant writer to write a grant to create a sustainable system so that our schools are well-supported with information for our parents, well-supported with programs for kids to take home and our district is well-supported with assistive technology.
Sarah Patzloff.
Well, this question to me is very similar to the other questions we've had around the budget and trying to prioritize. And if we were given a million dollar grant, I would cheer first because that would be awesome. But I, again, would ask the same types of questions. I'd like to be able to say that I would pick and know already where I'd want it to go, but I really would have to ask our administrators, our teachers and our families, where do you think this needs to go? Because it is so difficult to pick between student groups and all the efforts and all the things that do feel like there's not enough money. So that is where I would start, is where is the best place and how do we do it equitably?
Julie Green.
A million dollars, wow, that's pretty amazing thought. I was with a group of high school students last week and we were talking about just how they were doing. They were mostly seniors, a couple juniors. And they were all in the midst of their college application process. The stress level was through the roof. And they told me that. And I was asking them, what would you do at the school? What would you change? And all of them said, bring down the stress. Bring down the stress. And these are kids that are applying to Ivy League schools or one of those students there who didn't want to tell anyone where she was applying because she was embarrassed. And she has an average score, a 26 on her ACT. So what I would do with that million dollars, I'd give it to our students and say, let's work on this. What do you guys need? What do you need so that you know where you can go get help? What do you need so that when you see someone who needs help, you can point them in the right direction? Thanks.
Lou Nanny.
Well, with the million dollars, I wish we could invest it and multiply the talent. But with just that standard million, I would ensure that teachers have everything they need to do their best work and well-equipped to teach their students. Now, going back to the last lightning round question, this is one that needs some explanation. You guys have to keep in mind, I grew up in the Columbine era and I have a 16-month-old son that I would go to the ends of this world to protect. So hearing that there are rotating cops at the elementary schools and yes, there might be a two-to-four-minute response time, but the average active shooter is only two and a half minutes. So please, I saw a lot of shaking heads, but my God, I have a 16-month-old that basically is going to be gone from me for eight or nine hours a day. And if some teachers with the correct licensure and regulations and registration want to be armed to protect my kid, please, I still see shaking heads and that's fine. But I just urge you guys, I'm not going to dis- yeah, Jesus.
Thank you, your time is up. Lenny Wallen Friedman.
So the first thing you have to know is the million dollars is one-time funds. So that means you can't spend it on something that we then have to fund the next year. So with that, I would, again, talk to our administrators or teachers and say, what are our priorities? If you were to ask me, my priorities, professional development, we can always put additional dollars towards professional development. Course development, we could use the money to create a couple of compacted classes to serve the needs of the higher-end kids. We can create intervention classes. And these are things that we can meet with ongoing if we can develop them. Bridge classes for kids that are struggling. And mental health, those would be the areas where I would basically create the program because we don't always have the dollars to create the program. Once we can create it, we can then integrate it into what we're already doing and our existing dollars will fund it. But we need to get that push to create it.
Linda Friedy.
Well, if it's a one-time, $1 million stipend, I think I would definitely direct some of it toward professional development for sure in core academic subjects. The other part, if I could, in my fantasy world of having a million dollars, is frankly, I'm a tutor now that I retired. I tutor a lot of kids. And in a community like this, a lot of you can afford tutoring and a lot of us can't, a lot of people can't. And if it was a fantasy million dollars, I would find a way to create a fund or add to the give-and-go, donate it, or however we want to do it. But it's, from an equity standpoint, we would need to have, we need to have opportunities for kids who don't have fund, or families who don't have the ability to pay for help outside of school to get the help. Now, my dream would be not to need the help outside of school, but if it's a one-time gift, I would put seed some tutoring money because right now, some of their needs aren't being met at school.
Thank you. Now, we will begin closing statements. Each candidate will have 90 seconds. Linda Friedy.
Over the past year, I've attended or watched hundreds of hours of board meetings and work sessions. I understand achievement data and have done extensive research on many of the issues facing Edina. Education is my lifelong passion and I categorically disagree with the suggestion that changing demographics will lead to a decline in test scores. I taught in Edina for 15 years and in my job as a math intervention teacher, I dedicated myself to helping some of our community's most vulnerable students achieve accelerated academic growth in ways they never dreamed possible. We proved over and over again that children in the bottom 20% can become children in the top 20% with appropriate teaching and support. It can be done and we can do it. I believe we need more transparency, more accountability and that we must attach measurable metrics to everything that we do to ensure that our outcomes match our intentions. We must also maintain and improve rigorous academic options for students across the academic spectrum. In other words, we must lift the floor while we raise the ceiling so that all of our students' needs are being met. Most importantly, I'm steadfastly devoted to the welfare and development of your children. I'm ready to serve on the Edina School Board as a voice for students, parents and teachers. You can learn more about my campaign at friedyforedinaschools-
Thank you, your time is up.
-dot com.
Julie Green.
First, I want to thank PLC for this, your leadership in this important conversation and all the tireless work you guys do at our schools. I see you and it's a lot of work that you guys put in. And two, for our district staff and for their role in getting this together. That's our custodial staff, media and technology, communications, facilities. Thank you, guys. Our commitment to education in our schools in Edina is unparalleled. I promise you this, that if I'm awarded a role on this school board, I will always be willing to listen and to learn, whether you vote for me or not. But there's one thing I know for sure. Each and every child that comes to the Edina Public Schools front door, no matter what they look like, whether they walk in or they roll in, will have their own path with their own goals, achievements and, yes, setbacks. It'll look different for every student, as it should. I was at Southview's curriculum night a few weeks ago and my son's eighth-grade enrich science teacher told us, of all the places he's taught, he absolutely loves and how incredible it is to work at Southview because their learning is cool. Is that success? A middle school, middle school culture where students believe learning is cool? Yes, it is. And that doesn't happen by accident. It is intentional and it is important and it's a lot of hard work. It's a commitment to our students to create an engaging, inclusive and exciting learning environment and hold high standards and excellence.
Thank you, your time is up.
That's what I want for our kids.
Lou Nanny.
If elected, I will offer a unique set of experiences to the school board. As a recent graduate, I offer a student's perspective to the board. I understand the challenges and stresses of today's Edina students. Challenges such as navigating, social media, cyberbullying, which I have experienced myself, mental health and balancing academics and extracurriculars. Edina needs a board that is broad and diverse. Diverse in perspective, age and in background. I'll ask the tough questions, demand student achievement data as well as track the outcomes and set high expectations for myself, our students, teachers and the administration. Edina will always hold a special place in my heart. While my mother was an elementary school teacher in Burnsville, my grandparents moved here to Edina from Canada for the school system. This is where my dad, aunt and uncles all went to school and this is where my brother and I attended as well. And I hope my children can attend here one day, too. Education is one of the most important facets of my upbringing and I know how valuable it is to the parents as well as the homeowners that live in Edina. Thank you for all taking the time on your Tuesday afternoon.
Sarah Patzloff.
I believe we're all hornets first. And we need to look at our students as individuals and we need to ensure that they're all growing to their full individual potential. But I do believe we're at a pivotal point. Our community needs to decide what direction we want to go. And I think that choice is becoming more clear. Do we want excellence for every single student or mediocrity for all? Do we look at every decision based on what's best for all kids based on data and best practices? Or do we put lenses on and continue to test ideas with no clear measurements or outcomes? I believe our district has gotten off track. Our core focus has been clouded with other priorities. I've pushed back during my time on the board and I've raised the issues, but I've been in the minority on key votes. We need people on the board and in leadership who will represent the values, beliefs and priorities of our community. The school board is here to represent the people. We live and die by the facts of the decisions that we make. And that's not true for all of our administrators who then go home to their own school districts. Changes need to be made and that starts at the top. We need to raise all kids up. We must have high hopes for every single student that enters our building. I bring an understanding of the issues over time. I understand how the system works and I believe that I can help us move forward. Thank you.
Janie Shaw. In a previous forum, I spoke about what I thought our classrooms would look like in 10 years. I spoke about them being dynamic, intentional in meeting student needs and based around solid systems and clear pathways to individual success. We shouldn't wait 10 years. We shouldn't wait five years for that to begin. That vision is achievable and it relies on having a rock-solid foundation. It relies on work being done now by people like me who are willing to do the work and not just point out the problems. Studies show we are the best at what we do when we are focusing on the step in front of us. Right now, we need to focus on getting these next steps right for every child, no matter where they fall, in our population of learners. As we know from the late Bill Walsh, we only have control over the inputs. And when we over-fixate on scores or outcomes, it leads us to a series of short-term fixes that erode our foundation. We cannot afford any more of that. The work I will do on the board in the next four years- The work I will do on the board in the next four years will be focused on what produces the result, driving high expectations for our students, the district, and school board, and making decisions that support our goals. My 14 years working across the sites enables me to understand the downstream impact of board-level decision-making in a way that other candidates do not. I am truly an independent voice who has a proven track record of building bridges, collaborating, and driving solutions. I am committed-
Thank you, your time is up. Lenny Wallen Friedman.
Schools are about opportunity for our children. Whether they find school to be easy, hard, or just right, we want to provide all kids with the opportunity to succeed in school and in the world once they leave our schools. Creating opportunity requires making decisions about where to invest our resources. That means it's important that we have individuals on the board that are committed to creating opportunities for all kids and who have the experience and the skills to make the right decisions. I have shown by my actions over the past 20 years that I'm committed to creating opportunities for the kids in our district. Whether it was coaching sports or academic teams, serving as a treasurer, serving on finance committees, hosting eight different Normandale TAs, I've shown my commitment to create opportunities for the kids in our district. I also have the skills to make a significant contribution. I've been on the board for the past eight years, having served for the past four years as the board chair. During that time, I have focused on maintaining the excellence everyone expects from Edina while supporting new programs and facilities designed to meet the needs of all students in a fiscally sustainable fashion. As we embark on implementing a new strategic plan, it's important we have school board members who understand our schools, the role of the board, the goals of the district, and have personally understand the needs of the parents, teachers, and students. After eight years on the board, with students who have gone through our system and a student that's still in the system, I understand the critical roles that exceptional schools play in our community, and I ask for your vote on November 5th.
Thank you, your time is up. We have come to the end of our candidate forum. The PLC wants to thank each of our candidates for taking the time this morning to join us. We greatly appreciated the opportunity to learn more about each one of you, and we thank you for your willingness to serve the students, families, staff, and community of Edina Public Schools. I also want to thank the audience for attending, and the Edina Parent Leadership Council for hosting today's event. A reminder that a recording of today's forum will be available online soon at www.edinaschools.org/boredlection, and the flip grid videos can also be found there as well. And finally, please remember to vote on Tuesday, November 5th. Thank you.